Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. It is Tuesday, May 14th, a little after 7:30. We just came from executive session where we discussed the NRCS agreements. The first item on the agenda is a resolution considering approving a chicken/hen permit application for 59 Hillendale Road.
Whereas Jose and Davina Espinal, owners of 59 Hillendale Road, applied for a chicken/hem permit on April 17, 2024. And whereas, under Chapter 78-5 of the Village Code, details the stipulations of all chicken/hem permit applicants must adhere to in order to be granted a chicken/hem permit application. And whereas, under Chapter 78-5 of the Village Code, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees must approve any chicken/hem permits which are valid for a five-year period. Now therefore be resolved, the Village of Rybrook hereby approves or denies a chicken/hem permit application for 59 Hillendale Road under the following conditions should you guys approve it.
Thank you Greg. I'm gonna hold off on a motion second till we have a proposal on said decision. And I believe we have residents from 59 Hillendale, if you'd care to say anything. If you could just introduce yourself and then, thank you.
Hello, my name is Nick Espinal, resident of 59 Hillendale Road, I'm Jose's son. I'm also a proud Rybrook alumni, graduated in 2019. Been here, you know, my whole life. And I really must say that, you know, something that I really commend about the community is being able to foster an environment in which we're progressing along fruitful access. I don't know if you guys have read the memo that we've put together, but it's one that we really hold, you know, very dearly to us. It's, we view the ecological well-being of our shared community to be sacred. You know, it's something that we should really be paying attention to. And it goes far more, you know, deeply than just whatever headline somebody might read about there's a bunch of bees dying and, you know, air pollution or industrialized agriculture, you know, at scale. It really impacts our individualized, you know, household's ability to be able to maintain a fruitful environment. And that's really what brings us here today, which is that we believe through the waste management disposal of incorporating the nitrogen of the poultry manure into our fertilizer, we will be able to have a fruitful harvest in the 70 plants that we overlook. This is all for personal consumption, they're just a bunch of vegetables that my family and I like to eat. And, you know, we add that to the carbon-based composting that we do to be able to have a very fruitful harvest every year. So that's the main reason as to why it is that we want poultry manure, because the nitrogen actually complements really well with the carbon-based organic fertilizer that we create in our house. And we've been doing this for the last, you know, three years, but we've been definitely looking over plants for probably since I was a kid, you know, 12, 13 years old. And, you know, it's something that we really just, we really hold dear to us. And, you know, we would really motion that not only the community at large, but individual, I mean, just from neighbor to neighbor, that people really, you know, wake up and realize that this is of utmost importance to us, to the ecological well-being of all of our, you know, shared environment, so.
Alright, thank you. And, you know, there's a question for Greg and Ralph. I'm assuming, you know, this, because it's before us, that this application meets all the requirements that are in the code?
It was also reviewed by the village administrator as well as by our building inspector, just to make sure it adheres to the code. And I also had several conversations with the applicants to, regarding their memo, to make sure they detail that in the memo.
And yes, I have read it, and we appreciate it. Any questions or comments from, I'll open this up to questions or comments from the board.
I have a question. So are you guys building that coop situation? Or are you buying it? Like where are you getting, I saw the design in the plans. It looks really nice.
It looks, it looks really nice.
I'm gonna come visit the chickens.
Yeah, it's like an Ikea type of deal, you know, like you kind of buy it and we assemble it ourselves. And just following, obviously, it's like one big Lego, Lego box essentially.
Got it, got it. So it's all enclosed?
Yep.
Okay.
How you doing?
I'm great, how are you?
Okay. So it's, I guess really the most important thing, it's gonna be 40 feet from the property line?
Yes.
Yep, okay. That's one important factor to consider.
Yeah.
Because it looks like it's closed there, but I don't know, there's a pizza oven, I see a flagstone patio.
I'm coming over.
I know.
The invite is open.
Okay, looks good.
Sounds like the Stu Leonard commercials. Oh, okay. I kept expecting, alright, any other questions?
Nope.
Alright, well, I am, well, personally, I am, I think, you know, given that this meets codes, meets the code, this is what we designed this legislation for. My personal opinion is to allow this. We also do have in the legislation the right to revoke the permit should it become a nuisance. And so, you know, that's written into the code, we don't need a provision in there about it. That's what it is. I, you know, I think, given the proposed location and the details that are proposed, I personally don't see the need for any provisions. I don't know how everyone else feels, but I will need a motion on approval or a denial.
So moved.
Second.
Which? I need someone to make a, okay. Alright, so we have a motion on approval and a second. Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
No.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. You're approved.
Very exciting.
Thank you guys so much, we really appreciate it.
I live down the street from you guys, I'm gonna come by and see your chickens.
Good luck with everything.
I live down the street.
But just be warned if they're, if they're.
From the street also. I walk by there and I'm like, wow, what do they got going on there?
You know, you may want to ask the sustainability committee, I'm sorry, the sustainability, yeah, in the school, if they want to come by as a, just to see it one day when it's in working order. And I know that the elementary school is also doing a lot of gardening. So it'd be a great field trip. Lucky you.
I have a feeling this school probably isn't going to do chickens. I have a feeling that the state.
Not the elementary.
Would not be too thrilled about that.
But, wait, the teacher, what was the one that we always?
Hensley.
Hensley. Hensley would probably love it. AP site?
Yeah, the Roots and Shoots Club.
It's amazing.
Roots and Shoots Club, yes. That does work in our heart this far.
That's the club that would probably, not the elementary school.
Alright, thank you.
What are you, what are you doing now? Are you in this field? Are you in this field?
So no.
This is his passion project.
Yeah. Well, unless, unless it's an investment in chickens and chicken coops.
Well, that's what I wanted, I wanted.
In which case, yes.
Thank you.
Alright, moving along, resolution number two. Considering authorization of a form of residential contract of sale to be utilized in connection with the Natural Resources Conservation Services Recovery Buyout Program.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook is participating in the US Department of Agriculture's Natural Resource Conservation Service, or NSUS, Recovery Buyout Program, pursuant to a cooperative agreement between the Village and the NRCS dated September 29th, 2023. And whereas monies to ship dispersed to the Village through the NRCS program will fund the Village's acquisition of eligible residential properties within the Village identified as having a high risk of flooding at purchase prices based on the fair market value of such properties as of August 30th, 2021, the day before Hurricane Ida reached the Village. And whereas subsequent to acquisition, the residents located on the acquired properties will be demolished and removed as a recovery measure to prevent potential future risks to life and/or property. And the lands remaining will be subject to restrictive covenants requiring such lands to be preserved as green space in perpetuity. And whereas the owners of the following 14 eligible properties have agreed to participate in the NRCS program, subject to the entry into a contract of sale between each participating owner in the Village. I'm just gonna read out the various different participating addresses. 4 Brook Lane, 8 Brook Lane, 10 Brook Lane, 12 Brook Lane, 22 Brook Lane, 50 Rock Ridge Drive, 66 Rock Ridge Drive, 1 Wyman Street, 2 Wyman Street, 4 Wyman Street, 6 Wyman Street, 7 Wyman Street, 1 Wyman Street North, and 1A Wyman Street North. And whereas the Village is completing its due diligence prior to closing on the purchase of subject properties. And as part of this process, Village Council is prepared to propose form of residential contract of sale to be utilized in connection with the purchases of the subject properties being the buyouts. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the Village's use of form of residential contract of sale in connection with the buyouts, subject to minor modifications that are approved by Village Council. And be it further resolved, that the mayor and the village administrator are authorized to execute the residential contracts of sale with any minor modifications approved by Village Council for the buyouts which shall set forth their respective purchase prices approved by the Board of Trustees on their separate resolutions together with such documents as are necessary or beneficial to consummate the buyouts, including without limitation, New York State Real Estate Transfer Tax Returns, New York State Real Property Transfer Reports, declarations of restrictive covenants, and title company affidavits and disclosures, collectively closing documents.
Thank you Greg. Can I have a motion second please?
Motion.
Second.
Alright, so Ralph, do you want to just, I know we had discussed, this was the topic of conversation in executive session. But Ralph, do you want to just give a little background here about the contracts themselves? And the minor modifications that are listed just for the, for the public knowledge?
Sure, so, so what's happened at this point is working with another attorney in my office, Emily Westbrook is her name. We've come up with a form of contract of sale, which is comprised of a standard form, language that has been customized for this situation, along with a rider that we put together for this situation that is going to be used initially for each of the 14 transactions. That contract of sale then will be provided to the seller's attorney. There may be minor modifications to each of the agreements. And if we agree to those minor modifications, the board, by adopting this resolution, is allowing the transaction to move forward without any need to come back to the board because it at that point would be consistent with the form of the, of the contract of sale and those minor modifications approved by the Village Council. If there are any major modifications that come along, we will need to come back to the Board of Trustees at that point to present those major modifications and to get approval of the Board of Trustees for any modifications that would be major in nature. So what the, what the board essentially is doing by approving this resolution is allowing each of the transactions to go forward using that form of contract of sale with any minor modifications that might be necessary and approved by us as the attorneys.
Great, thank you Ralph. And this is just a continuation of the, of the program that we've been participating in for quite a while now. And, and I would also remind everyone that this is very unique. That this is not really, this has not been done before in Westchester. We are the first. And to me, very exciting, as another way of trying to limit the impacts of flooding on village residents. There's a lot of other projects that we're obviously pursuing and things that we're trying to do to limit the effects of flooding in Rybrook. This is one that directly affects a lot of homeowners by giving them an option to sell their property to the Village to be turned into flood plain so that they don't have to worry about the house flooding anymore because there won't be a house there anymore. It gives them an option and a real value. Most of these values are above assessed value where they're able to then purchase a new home for themselves. So any, any questions or comments from the board?
I thought that one of the other benefits for the Village is that it will not put our responders in danger should there be flooding.
That's correct as well. That's absolutely correct. That, you know, we've had to respond to flooded homes and it does put our responders, whether it be police or fire, EMS, in harm's way potentially.
And also, this is no cost to our village.
Correct, correct. That during this whole process.
Out of my own detail.
Yes, that during this whole process, this is a reimbursement program and this will come at no cost to the Village and therefore at no cost to the taxpayers.
That's it. That's a big one. That's a big one. Yep.
Any other questions or comments? I know it's something we've discussed, this is really, but any questions or comments about the contracts itself or the process?
I actually have a question. So I'm just looking at like Wyman Street, for example. It seems like almost everyone that is close to the Brook is taking this, except maybe like one or two. Like, is that gonna be really disruptive to them? Like are there things that we'll be able to do? Like is it all gonna be done at the same time? Are they gonna do like one at a time?
I think it depends on when the closings are and the process itself.
Okay.
That.
Because I mean, I'm just looking like it's like, looks like that one person.
Yeah, and there will be some disruption. I mean, just like if there was a home next to yours that was getting demolished and rebuilt, except this will be without the rebuilt part. So there absolutely will be some, you know, some inconvenience, I would imagine, to some of the neighboring properties. And, and I think it's also, we can point out that not all of the properties that were eligible for this program took advantage of it. And it was completely volunteer. So there was, there was, it was of the choice of the homeowners solely, that they were being offered this opportunity and it was their choice whether they took it or not. And, and it'll be, yeah, there may be some inconvenience and it may be disruptive, but that'll be short-lived. And then the property will be kept as green space, as the legislation says, turned into flood plain. And, and at that point, it'll be like living next to that green space, so. Any other questions or comments?
Nope. I think we're good.
Okay, so again, this is just on the, the contract issue.
And thank you to Emily Westbrook and Keenan Bean for helping to resolve all this.
Alright, actually, I would like to say that we should help, we should really thank Chris and Greg and everybody on our staff who helped facilitate this because it took many, many months of meetings, many phone calls and outreach. And I think that the people that are availing themselves of this are very happy with.
I would, I would agree with that.
Yes.
That they, yeah.
Most of them are ready to.
And there's still many, many more months to go, so.
Exactly.
Once everything's all said and done.
It is a government thing and it often takes this kind of time, but I know that we have been moving judiciously to make this happen for them.
Yeah, and now we're finally at the point where we're actually purchasing the homes.
Exactly.
So it gives, this is the point where the people who choose to participate in this program will see actual results, get money to find a new home and be able to fully take advantage of this program. And then it becomes the Village's responsibility to finish out the rest.
And thank you. And also just want to give a quick thank you also to Senator Shelley Myers and Assemblyman Steve Otis's office because they were also very helpful in presenting the program to us as well. Okay, I'm gonna call the roll call. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution number three, also related to this. Considering the purchase of certain properties participating in the National Resources Conservation Service Recovery Buyout Program.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook is participating in the US Department of Agriculture's Natural Resources Conservation Service, the NRCS Recovery Buyout Program, pursuant to a cooperative agreement between the Village of Rybrook and the NRCS dated September 29th, 2023. Whereas monies dispersed to the Village through the NRCS program will fund the Village's acquisition of eligible residential properties within the Village identified as having a high risk of flooding at purchase prices based upon the fair market value of such properties as of August 30th, 2021, the day before Hurricane Ida reached the Village. And whereas subsequent to acquisition, the residences located on the acquired properties will be demolished and removed at a recovery measure to prevent potential risk, potential future risks to life and/or property. And the lands remaining will be subject to restrictive covenants requiring such lands to be preserved as green space in perpetuity. And whereas the owners of the following 14 eligible properties have agreed to participate in the NRCS program, subject to the entry into a purchase agreement between each participating owner and the Village. And once again, just reading out the, all the participating properties. 4 Brook Lane, 8 Brook Lane, 10 Brook Lane, 12 Brook Lane, 22 Brook Lane, 50 Rock Ridge Drive, 66 Rock Ridge Drive, 1 Wyman Street, 2 Wyman Street, 4 Wyman Street, 6 Wyman Street, 7 Wyman Street, 1 Wyman Street North, and 1A Wyman Street North. And whereas Village Council has prepared a proposed form of residential contract of sale to be utilized in connection with the purchases of the subject properties, each such purchase transaction being a buyout and collectively being the buyouts, which residential contract of sale has been approved by the Board of Trustees pursuant to a separate resolution. And whereas the Village previously retained Collier's International Valuation and Advisory Services to prepare full market value appraisals of the subject properties as of August 30th, 2021, the day before Hurricane Ida, which appraised values of the subject properties as follows. Again, if you want me, I can go through all of them.
No, I can just say, and there's a list of.
Yeah, there's a list and all the different properties appraised at their respective amounts. And whereas the NRCS has approved the purchase price for each of the subject properties, an amount equal to the appraised value minus any deductions required by the NRCS due to documentation submitted by the property owner regarding the use of recovery assistance, the resulting amount of such calculation being the NRCS-approved purchase price. And whereas the NRCS will advance to the Village the full NRCS-approved purchase price for each of the subject properties prior to closing of the corresponding buyout. Now therefore be resolved, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the purchase of each of the subject properties at the corresponding NRCS-approved purchase price. And be it further resolved, that the mayor and/or village administrator are authorized to execute the residential contracts of sale with any minor modifications approved by Village Council for the buyouts together with such documents as are necessary or beneficial to consummate the buyouts, including without limitation, New York State Real Estate Transfer Tax Returns, New York State Real Property Transfer Reports, declarations of restrictive covenants, and title company affidavits and disclosures, collectively closing documents.
Thank you Greg. Can I have a motion second please?
Motion.
So again, this is just assigning the values and us accepting the values. This is, and remember that we had hired an appraiser previously and who put the values on these homes, which was then accepted by NRCS, who will be reimbursing us for these values. So if NRCS is good with this, as far as I'm concerned, I'm good with this.
Right. I would just say, this, this is the resolution where the Board of Trustees is actually authorizing the, the purchase of each of these properties at the NRCS-approved purchase price pursuant to the contract of sale.
I would just like to suggest that since Mr. Rivera is in very good physical shape, he needs to start exercising his vocal cords so that they too will be in good shape.
My throat is covered with maladies, actually.
And the other thing I would just add to this is that some of these values are adjusted a little bit because of the insurance monies that people had received after Ida, that they had to actually prove that those were spent.
Correct. On, on, on purchases to improve the properties, correct.
Right.
Oh, so even if they improved it, they were able to get the number or they deducted it?
Yes, certain deductions were made, but these prices, this is the maximum received. Some minor reductions may be in certain of some of the properties. But this will prove at least, this is the maximum value that can be approved. And there may be some minor reductions, only, I think a couple applies too. But this is pretty much what it'll be for pretty much all of them.
And I do have one more question. How will, how will the taxes work until this is closed?
That I can't answer, yeah.
Just regular closing.
Correct. The taxes will be due until the, until the closing.
Thank you.
Yeah. And that would be incoming on the town of Ry, too, the way that they.
Yes, that the town collects taxes, that's why I can't. Any other questions or comments?
Other questions or comments on this?
No.
Okay. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Also related to this, resolution number four. Considering the selection of an oil tank inspection company for the National Resource Conservation Service Recovery Buyout Program.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook is participating in the National Resources Conservation Service, or NRCS Recovery Buyout Program. And whereas, as part of its due diligence in purchasing up to 14 properties, the Village is in need of certain professional services, including a company to examine current concerns with past or present oil tanks that may exist on several of these properties. And whereas, the Village has received a professional services proposal dated 9th, 2024 from American Petroleum Equipment and Construction Company, also known as American Petroleum, which may include services included in Westchester County Contract 23-200. And whereas, American Petroleum has worked successfully with the Village of Rybrook in the past. And now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Trustees hereby approves hereby American Petroleum of New York to assist the Village with its due diligence prior to purchasing these 14 properties. And be it further resolved, that the mayor and village administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you Greg. Can I have a motion second please?
Motion.
Any questions?
Explain what this is for, though.
Sure, sure, so, yeah. Greg or Ralph?
Yes, I'll kick this off. So there are about six in total that have history of oil tanks. And there's been at least one that has had a history of active oil spill. So this will allow us to do any necessary testing because that's what we're responsible for, of any potential oil hazard. So when we dig in there, we don't cause any ecological hazards to any of the properties. So American Petroleum can conduct a service on the county contract. We worked them in the past. And they will conduct that necessary testing for us so that way we can make sure that when we take those properties in question where we're concerned about potential oil tank hazard, we could do it in a safe and efficient manner. So they'll do all the testing for us.
No, this is just simply for the Village to do its environmental due diligence related to those properties that had buried oil tanks.
In addition to the testing, will they be doing the remediation?
So there's only one that I know that has any form of active oil spill. So that's a tough question to ask me to answer, if it's. Regarding, yeah, no, if, American Petroleum, would they be doing any remediation if necessary?
Good evening. So any remediation work would still be on the homeowner. So we are doing our due diligence as a buyer, no different than any homeowner who's looking to purchase a house and you find a oil spill or a failed oil tank, it's still up onto the property owner to perform that work. I know there was one oil spill in question due to Ida. That got called in, which it should have, but was there really a spill? We won't know until we do a soil sample, but any remedial work is still upon the homeowner or the property owner.
Okay, thank you Michael.
Wait, we have a question, Michael. Are you related to Michelle?
No. No relation to Michelle from American Petroleum.
Were you like?
That was the first question that both of us had of each other. We're cousins, but no.
That's so funny. I was like, wait a minute.
Alright, any other questions or comments?
No.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number five, considering, sorry, considering authorizing a change in life insurance carrier.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook ceased to change its life insurance carrier from Principal Life Insurance to the Standard Life Insurance Company of New York, which provides equivalent coverage at a reduced cost. And whereas the Village of Rybrook Administrator has notified representatives of each of the Village's bargaining units of this changing carriers. And whereas the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees must approve the change of life insurance carriers. Now therefore be it resolved, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the change of life insurance carriers from Principal Life Insurance to the Standard Life Insurance Company of New York at identical coverage effective June 1st, 2024, in accordance with the proposal C from the Standard Life Insurance Company of New York, which provides equivalent life insurance coverage at a reduced cost. And be it further resolved, that the mayor, the village administrator, and the village treasurer are authorized to sign and execute any documents reasonable or appropriate to implement this change in carrier.
Thank you Greg. Can I have a motion second please?
Second.
I think the, the most important words to me in that resol- I think the the most important words to me in that resolution are identical coverage. This represents zero change to what is being offered to the Rydbrook.
And reduced cost.
Yeah. Well, that we like, but it's.
Yes.
What's important is that this represents no change.
Right.
To the staff, to, you know, village employees.
Because it represents no change, have any of the unions requested bargaining about this?
So we had a labor management meeting with the PBA regarding this. So they, we are in the process of getting some clarification for them that they requested. But the, yes, that's right, dental, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, not the life insurance.
Thank you. But no, it's about life insurance. I forgot one.
Any other questions, comments?
Okay. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heizer?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Speaking of dental, Resolution Number Six, Considering Authorizing a Change in Dental Insurance Carrier.
Whereas the Village of Rydbrook seeks to change its insurance carrier from Aetna Dental DPPO and DHMO to Cigna Dental Healthcare Access Plus DPPO and DHMO, which provides equivalent benefits at a reduced cost. And whereas the Village of Rydbrook Administrator has notified representatives of each of the village's bargaining units of this change in carriers. And whereas the Village of Rydbrook Board of Trustees must approve the change of dental insurance carriers. Now therefore be it resolved, the Village of Rydbrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the change of dental carriers from Aetna Dental DDPO/DHMO to Cigna Dental Care Access Plus DPPO and DHMO effective August 1st, 2024, in accordance with the proposals received from Cigna, which provides equivalent dental, equivalent benefits at a reduced cost, and be it further resolved that the mayor, village administrator, and village treasurer are authorized to sign and execute any documents reasonable or appropriate to implement this change in carrier.
Thank you, Greg. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
Again, similar, where it's equivalent benefits at a reduced cost, and so looking to save village some money while making sure that the village employees are entitled to the same benefits that they had been previously.
As the chief mentioned, Trustee Heizer, this is the one where we had the labor management meeting with the PBA.
They were the only union that.
Yes, to my knowledge, yes, yes. The fire union, as well as the Teamsters, did not express any objections, at least I know of. But we are getting the clarifications for them, PBA. Just any questions?
Any other questions or comments?
No. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heizer?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution Number Seven, Considering Emergency Repair Work for the Belfair Pump Station. Date wrong in the backup, but that's okay.
Yes.
It's fine on the resolution.
Whereas on December 14th, 2023, the Belfair Pump Station suffered from a sewage leak, and whereas the Superintendent of Public Works immediately sent multiple proposals to local vendors to obtain quotes. And whereas ELQ Industries of 567 Fifth Avenue, New Rochelle, New York, 100801, was the only vendor to respond affirmatively to the Superintendent of Public Works' proposal for emergency purchase. Whereas under the Village of Rydbrook's financial policy, a minimum of three written quotes are required for a purchase between the amounts of $4,000 to $19,099. And whereas pursuant to Section 103 of the General Municipal Law, emergency purchase outside the authorized Village of Rydbrook's procurement policy amounts can be approved by the Village of Rydbrook Board of Trustees to prevent threats to the life, health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Rydbrook. And whereas if the not repaired on a timely basis, the sewage leak at the Belfair Pump Station posed an imminent threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Rydbrook. And whereas pursuant to Section 103 of the General Municipal Law, the Village of Rydbrook seeks to approve emergency purchase, will LO, ELQ Industries to repair the sewage leak at the Belfair Pump Station. Now therefore be it resolved pursuant to Section 103 of General Municipal Law, the Village of Rydbrook Board of Trustees hereby approves emergency purchase for the Belfair Pump Station sewage leak by ELQ Industries of 567 Fifth Avenue, New Rochelle, New York, 10801.
Thank you, Greg. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
And again, this is this is just kind of catching up. Michael, do you want to say anything? Or this is pretty much, yeah, pretty much self-explanatory. There was there was something that needed emergency work back in December, and this is just catching up on the paperwork of this. And I guess we could have had this earlier, but we're getting to it now, and that's the important part.
I was talking about the price. That's why.
Gotcha. So any questions or comments?
Just thank you, Michael, for dealing with this.
Yes, and certainly.
It's a dirty job, that's all it has to do.
Okay, Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heizer?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution Number Eight, Considering Reallocation of Capital Project Funds and Closing of Capital Projects.
So just briefly describe it, then I'll call upon the police chief, because this is mostly for the police department in terms of regarding police vehicles. So Chief, can you just explain why we have to do all this relocation?
Why don't you read the resolution first?
Now therefore be resolved, the following transfer between capital projects is hereby approved from a fund that is replacing two vehicles. And then further resolved that the following capital project budget to restate is follows. And again, we're doing as the budget modifications as necessary, based on the accounts listed.
And be it further resolved.
Yes, thank you. And further resolved that the following capital projects with no remaining balance are closed or moved from the capital project linked schedule. Same thing, modifying and doing the expenditures and transfers as required based on the irrelevant accounts.
All right. Thank you, Greg. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
Chief?
So we're just doing some housekeeping on capital projects, multiple capital projects for police cars. So we have like three, three open capital projects. One is pretty much done, and the other two are cars that need to be outfitted, so we're just combining them all into one capital project, so it's easier to monitor and maintain them.
Any questions or comments? I think we see these quite a bit, and I'm sure there's, you know, a lot of explanation behind all these transfers, and it all works out as a zero.
Yes.
And as it usually does, because we know that Trish is very much on the ball in all of these things, and so.
Always a double entry bookkeeping.
All right. And thank you for the explanation. Any questions or comments?
No. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heizer?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Staying within the police department, Resolution Number Nine, Considering Creating an Additional Detective Assignment for the Rydbrook Police Department.
Whereas the Village of Rydbrook currently has two police officers and one police sergeant assigned by the Chief of Police as detectives. And whereas the Chief of Police seeks to assign a third police officer, who is also assigned as to be as the school resource officer, to be a detective in the Rydbrook Police Department. And whereas the Village of Rydbrook Board of Trustees must approve the creation of this assignment and related funding due to the additional funds and identification of staffing that is currently identified in the balance of the fiscal 2024 adopted budget and the upcoming fiscal 2025 adopted budget. Now therefore be it resolved that effective immediately, the Village of Rydbrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the creation of funding for the third police officer and one police sergeant to be assigned by the Chief of Police to be detective in the Rydbrook Police Department.
Thank you, Greg. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
And again, this assignment is in relation to the SRO that we have, but remember that that's not year-round, and so really our detectives are, you know, there's there's an opportunity for more detective work to be occurring within the department, and this will allow this detective assignment to assist with that. Chief, is there anything you want to say about this?
That's exactly right. We have a lot of detective responsibilities that's really being shared by one detective and a detective on light duty, and having this additional detective assignment will enable us to have a detective available at night, you know, weekends, for call-ins when necessary, when when things happen and we need a detective, and it's not falling on the shoulders of just one.
Which is, which is great, and, you know, and personally, you know, seeing the movement we've been making in the police department within the last few months, adding the position in the budget, rehiring into some of the positions, now adding this detective assignment, I think, you know, really is moving the department in a positive direction. And, you know, and that's thanks to your leadership and and for bringing this to our attention, so.
Thank you, it's your support, you know, and it creates more opportunity, which is important to the police officers.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's that's also an added benefit of it as well, is to create that opportunity.
Yes, thank you.
Questions or comments?
No. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heizer?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution Number Ten, Considering an Intermunicipal Agreement Between the Village of Rydbrook and Westchester County for Police Department Radios.
Whereas Westchester County is offering to provide municipal police department new radios at no cost to improve communication between law enforcement agencies. And whereas the Village of Rydbrook seeks to enter into an agreement with Westchester County to acquire the radios at no cost. Now therefore be it resolved, the Village of Rydbrook hereby approves the intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County to acquire new police department radios at no cost to the village to improve communication between law enforcement agencies subject to modification by council. And be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator hereby authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Greg. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
We like free things. No, we thank the County of Westchester for providing these radios, certainly, you know, anything that we can take advantage of to improve our equipment and at no cost to the village, which seems to be a theme this tonight a little bit, which we like. We're happy to take advantage of. Questions or comments?
No. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heizer?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution Number Eleven, Considering a Donation to the Village of Portchester for the 2024 Independence Day Celebration and Fireworks.
Whereas the Village of Portchester will host its 2024 Independence Day Celebration July 4th, and whereas the Village of Rydbrook Board of Trustees would like to continue to continue to assist with this event, now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Rydbrook will pay $5,000 to the Village of Portchester for a 2024 Independence Day Celebration.
Thank you, Greg. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Still moved.
Second.
I did check with with Chris and Greg, and this is the same amount that we have given in previous years, so this does not represent an increase. As someone who grew up in the Village of Rydbrook, I went to this fireworks show as a child. I go every year as an adult with my children, and I absolutely love it. I think it's one of the best shows around.
Is Mayor Klein supposed to be here?
I know. Well, I was gonna say, the one thing I do miss is when Hope used to come and sing to ask for this, but with the with the, you know, with the, you know, Stars and Stripe headband and and everything, but we'll accept, that's okay. And I did receive the the request letter on this, which is why it's on the agenda. So any questions or comments?
Nope. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heizer?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution Number Twelve, Considering Authorizing the Renewal of a Westchester County Department of Health Food Service Permit Application to Operate a Food Service Establishment at the AJP Community Center.
Whereas the Westchester County Department of Health Sanitary Code requires that a food service permit be obtained from the Department of Health to operate a food service establishment. And whereas the Anthony J. Placilipo Community Center serves and operates a food service establishment, and would like to renew their application for such permit in order to comply with all the rules and regulations of the Westchester County Department of Health. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Rydbrook Board of Trustees hereby authorize the senior center coordinator to apply for renewal of a food service permit for the Anthony J. Placilipo Community Center, and to execute and to deliver to the Westchester County Department of Health for and on behalf of the village, a renewal application for a permit to operate a food service establishment, and to execute and deliver any and all additional documents which may be appropriate or desirable in connection therewithin.
Thank you, Greg. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
Just want to say thank you to Liz Ralpheld for everything that she does down there.
Absolutely.
And this is, I mean, this is something we do every year, for us to be able to provide the food service there, and it's certainly something that's welcome and appreciated by village residents and those outside the village who take advantage of the program, but not for the reduced cost that the village residents are are able to use. Questions or comments?
No.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heizer?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. A lot of resolutions, but we're flying through them. Resolution Number Thirteen, Considering Designating the Week of May 19th through 26th, 2024 as National Public Works Week and Recognizing the Rydbrook Public Works and Parks Department's Staff.
Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the Village of Rydbrook. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is the in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the Village of Rydbrook to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association. And whereas the Rydbrook Public Works and Parks Staff continue to provide professional and exemplary services for the residents of the Village of Rydbrook, and maintain our roads, parks, and infrastructure to the highest level possible, given the available resources. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rydbrook Mayor and Board of Trustees do hereby designate the week of May 19th to 26th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. And be it further resolved that the mayor and Board of Trustees hereby expresses its appreciation to the dedicated Rydbrook Public Works and Parks Staff, who continue to provide exemplary service to the Rydbrook residents. And be it further resolved that the village urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
Thank you, Greg. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
So I have two questions. The first is, do we have any such activities, events, or ceremonies lined up?
I will defer that to our Superintendent of Public Works, if he has any ideas.
Because, you know, I'd be happy to come over to the garage and just give a proclamation.
We will have to establish a date for that, and that would be appreciated. We, as a village, we have done things in the past, and I've been trying to do something with the schools, but timing's been tough.
Yeah.
We have done truck shows.
I was gonna ask. Yeah, I remember.
It's been tough, and where we used to do it apparently is no longer there. We used to do that Bright Horizons in Belfair, they're no longer there, from what I understand, and I've been talking with the schools, just, it's just bad, the timing so far, but the American Public Works Association, the New York chapter, will be having some events around the county, you know, with some other municipalities.
All right.
So we will have some association things out there.
Gotcha. All right. I'm happy to send a proclamation to, to, to that. And my second question is, if this is the 64th annual one, this is the first time I think I've seen such a resolution, this is more a question for Chris, who isn't here, so I'll pick on him. Why we haven't done this before?
It's actually the second time we.
We did it last year.
We have done this last year.
We did it last year.
Oh, we did it last year? Okay, I just don't remember. Maybe I missed that meeting.
Yes, but we did it for, for sure, last year.
All right. All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Michael, before you leave, thank you.
Yes.
And thank all your employees.
Well, I thank all the staff. They do a great job. They're awesome in the field. They, they are able to pull things together based on what they have or whatever the situation is given to them, so I gotta say, I am grateful to work with a great group of individuals from that respect. They put their heart into everything, and it shows. So thank you for the board and everybody for being so supportive of them and the residents as well, it means a lot, and it does go a long way, and it is appreciated. So thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we are really appreciative of everything our DBW and Park staff do. Certainly, we would not be the village we are without them.
Thank you.
And I, I also just want to add too, just that again, the village administrator likes to say all the time, we're small and mighty, and we are, particularly our public works and our staff crew, they're a very small crew, and they do a lot, we have, and they also do a lot of the events, which wouldn't be, well, a lot of things that the village does wouldn't be possible without their effort, so thank you as well, Michael, to you as well as on your staff for everything you guys do, because, again, you guys are a small crew, and we do expect a lot out of you, but you guys always do a good job.
Thank you. All right. Greg?
Yes. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, and thank you for your service. Resolution, sorry, I lost here, number 14, considering designating the week of May 19th through 26th, 2024, same one, as Emergency Medical Services EMS Week and recognizing the Portchester Ry, Rybrook Emergency Medical Service.
Whereas emergency medical services is a vital and essential public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services is an essential part of the healthcare system and provides important pre-hospital care to people in the community, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas the Portchester Ry, Rybrook Emergency Medical Service has served our community since 1968 and provides superior EMS service over 6,000 annual calls and an average response time of less than six minutes, and whereas May 19th to, and May 26th, 2024 is the 50th Annual National EMS Week with this year's theme being honoring our past and forging our future. Now therefore be it resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees do hereby acknowledge the week of May 19th to 26th, 2024 as Emergency Medical Services Week and thank the Portchester Ry, Rybrook Emergency Medical Service for all their continued hard work, dedication and service to the Rybrook community.
Thank you, Greg. Can I have a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
This is one I wish Chris was here for, because I'd say there's no bigger advocate in Westchester County for EMS than, than Chris Bradbury. He has fought for EMS at the state level and beyond to, to get benefits equal to what some of the, you know, other services are receiving, and also to, to fight for EMS being considered an essential service.
Yes.
Which it should be. So I wish Chris were here to participate in this, but certainly we thank the Portchester Ry, Rybrook EMS Service. This is something that is a huge benefit to our community, they're very professional, and they operated non-stop during COVID when everyone else was, you know, safe in their homes, along with our police, fire, DBWs and other members, they, they were out protecting the public. And so we, we certainly thank them for all that they have done and continue to do for the residents of Rybrook.
Let me echo a previous question by the mayor. This is the 50th year that this has gone on. Have we ever done this before?
We did it last year as well.
So in other words, we're two for, two out of 50.
All right, better late than, than ever.
I was about to say that the mayor took my words, but we're better late than ever.
And, and now that we're aware of it, we'll make sure that it continues moving forward.
Just a couple of quick things. The mayor, just, you asked a question about public works, at least in EMS. I can't give official details yet, because it's not finalized, but we're trying to work on something to show our appreciation for EMS during EMS Week, so at least that I can assure you then, should that all work out, I will send all of you guys the details.
Great, I will certainly be there if my schedule allows.
Thank you. And just on a personal note, again, just want to say my own personal thank you to the EMS. They have covered three communities and 6,000 calls, which is an astronomical amount, and I know some, I think, I mentioned this to all of you, I am a volunteer firefighter, which I'm not an EMT, but I'm a first responder myself, I do have a personal appreciation for first responders and all that they do, so just thank you Kenny Barton and the ship that he runs, and all the EMTs and paramedics and all the staff at the Portchester Ry, Ry, Rybrook EMS, because it's definitely, it's not an easy job, for sure.
Any other questions or comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number 15, considering approval of the minutes for the meeting held on November twen, meetings held on November 28th, 2023 and December 12th, 2023.
We usually do this by accident.
Yeah, but we first, we need the resolution.
Resolution, quick. Yep. Now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approves the minutes for the meetings held on November 28th and December 12th of 2023.
Thank you, Greg. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right.
He didn't know. Sorry.
All right, administrators report.
Yes, I have definitely some events that I want to mention, so this Saturday is actually going to be quite a bit going on for, yeah, so I'll start with something that I'm doing. So at 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Butterfly Garden right out in front of this village hall, I'll be revitalizing with the help, this worked with conjunction of the Sustainability Committee and some of our highway personnel. I will put in fresh plants, again, it's a native pollinar, native pollinator friendly plants, that's our chair Bridgette Dix has helped pick out, again, we definitely want to maintain it, it's a nice butterfly garden out in front, it's a legacy of my predecessor, Alex, also to help bring it to village hall, and we'd definitely like to see that going. So, and then follow at 11 o'clock, just an interesting community event going on at Crawford Park, there's a Holly pancreatic cancer fundraiser going on there, sorry, 11 to 1 at Crawford. If anybody's interested, if you could stop by, and I'll definitely try to stop by myself once I'm done over here at village hall. At 1 o'clock, and good thing that none of these events conflict with each other, from 1 o'clock to 5 o'clock, the Blenbrook High School's having its 50th anniversary, so I know we have a couple of alum from the high school, both to my left, both trustee Fisher and, and Mayor Klein, so definitely if anybody's interested, you, and, oh, sorry, I forgot, also the chief Austin as well, yes, thank you. We're also alum of Blenbrook High School, so congratulations to Blenbrook High School on their 50th anniversary. And then lastly, we have at 5 to 7, we have a scavenger hunt with the work of our recreation department, so again, let's, I want to thank them for all the hard work, of course, that they do and all their different events, and again, if you, please sign up for that, if you're interested, it should be a fun evening event for the kids.
Where is that?
That's at Pine Ridge Park, or, I'm sorry. And just a couple out, looking out into the future, remember this, the birthday is going to be June 15th, however, we are doing something a little bit different this year, we typically utilize Crawford Park, however, because of the renovations of the field, that will not be an option this year, so we're using the King Street Athletic Fields, still from 12 to 4 as of now, but the birthday will be at King Street Athletic Fields again, rather than Crawford Park. And then just, I just want to mention this, you know, it's a couple of months away, because I've been getting quite a few emails regarding this from residents curious about a community tag sale, and the answer is yes, we will be having one, the date will be July 27th from 9 to 3. I will work on getting a signup link there for residents who are interested, so if you have anybody who is, if anybody has anything that they're storing, or they want to throw away, just hang on to it for a couple of months, and then you can utilize your own address for, to sell, however, I just want to make something clear, I know some of the HOA's in Rybrook do not allow their residents to do that, but there is an option available at 62 Bowman Avenue, it's a Michael Goldstein, who's resident there, who owns his law firm, for a small fee, usually about, suggested donation of about like $30, $40, but you have to bring your own table, but he allows you to rent out space for those who either don't want to use their own address or slash property, or for those that can't because of certain HOA guidelines or other circumstances, and I know that, I do also want to plug this too, for Music in the Park, because that's going to be coming up in the summer, I know that's a personal brainchild of trustee Epstein, so we all better make sure that we go to those.
Working on it.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we did have to cancel the cornhole tournament, which has been a bummer, we had low attendance, so let's definitely try to make sure we get to some of these Saturday events, you know, a lot of work does go into it, and it's, and our recreation staff does work very hard, so we definitely want to at least also have a good time with your friends and your family and your neighbors, and they all should be nice nights out. Just one other, just final thing I do want to mention, this happened a few weeks ago, but again, I did know her personally, I know so did pretty much all of you here, on Friday, April 26th, we, it was Arbor Day, but most importantly, we, we detail there our Ashley Weldy Day, and I want to thank the staff of Rybrook, who I've worked with here, I want to thank the town of Ry, as well as the Blenbrook School District and their staff who helped make that event happen, as well as the Sustainability Committee. Ashley again was a member of both the town of Ry Sustainability Committee, the village of Ry, Sustainability Committee, and was the school, on the school board, including its president, and she meant a lot to this community, I know that many of you, of course, knew her much better than I did, I was very fortunate to work with her in the last couple of years of her life, her definitely, her loss is definitely going to be felt for many years to come, but she did leave a legacy behind that, I mean, all of us, I think, can aspire to emulate, and we're going to miss her very much, and, but it was definitely a nice day that we had on the 26th, I definitely want to thank everybody who came out and showed their support. That's it for me.
All right, great, thank you. Any comments from the public? Seeing none? And I just, before we end though, the, the next meetings are May 28th and June 11th, and I would just, as trustee Heiser pointed out, there is on the 28th, is when we have the public hearing regarding the scoping document for the, the EIS for, for the.
975.
975, thank you.
They haven't come up with a name, yeah.
I was blanking on the, the address, but the 975, with written comments due on May 31st, because I know there was a lot of public interest in that. And that.
Make, make one chiming thing, because I just forgot. So, May 1st, effective this month, the leaf blower law came into effect, no, we got some calls about this, if you do see someone using a gas-powered leaf blower, please report it to the police at their main line, their non-emergency line, and I would just say though, just please do it as you see it, do not wait until after the dummy, because by the time the police get there, they'll be gone, but just remember that gas-powered leaf blowers, for the exception of the activities detailed in the law, the properties that this village board authorized for extra time with any relevant stipulations, you cannot use gas-powered leaf blowers until, from now until October 1st. You could still use electric during that time, but again, gas-powered leaf blowers are prohibited until now, until October 1st.
Can we make citizen arrests?
That's up to the police chief.
No, you may not.
Right, and I.
For your own safety.
Okay, so I think that we should also reiterate rules and perhaps contact the gardeners to remind them, so that way we don't have, we don't bother our police officers for this. So I think that contacting, I think that we had somebody who was a representative for all of the gardeners.
Ripley Landscapers Association.
I, I could, I reached out to them to remind them of the law, and I've been in communication with all the properties that be authorized extra time, just to make sure they're adhering to what they agree to, to this board, however, just for the landscapers that are not a part of that association, that's where it gets a little tricky, but at least to the landscapers that came here and the ones that we met with, I have spoke with them about this law to remind them, just to remind all their members who operate in Rybrook of what the laws and the stipulations are.
Okay, so I, I actually think that if we have, if we create something that homeowners can print out with the rules and hand to somebody that they think is actually not following the rules, it might be a better way to go to like, give them a, a kind of warning, instead of calling the police, in other words, these are the rules of the village, make it official, so that way we're not.
A lot of times we would ask a homeowner not to get involved in it, because it could lead to a confrontation.
That's the issue there.
I don't think it's any better having the police do it. I personally think that.
Well, it prevents the homeowners.
Or take a picture of the, I know the people are sending me pictures of trucks.
Right.
So we can.
And that should be reported to the, to the Rybrook Village Police.
Yes, so I'll just give you, if you were like to call in for like a noise ordinance, let's say hypothetically, your neighbor's blasting, having a loud party, it, it's a similar like type of situation, you don't, you're not going to go over there and, and have a confrontation, that's the idea of the, the issue.
Right.
And look, not to say there's any, is a perfect solution, but all these get reports, the police get, we don't want neighbors, I look, if you have a friendly relationship with your neighbor, and if you can remind them, by, by all means, but definitely we don't want a situation where neighbors come to blows and then the police have to respond to a neighbor situation.
I think that, in other words, personally, I would hand my gardener the sheet saying, these are the rules.
Right, and.
That's what we would want people to do.
And I think that's something, maybe we can ask the Sustainability Committee and the staff to come up with something that homeowners could use to hand out to their own landscapers.
And that way it's not confrontational, you do it for your own, so that way they're aware of it.
Yep.
Because they're going to be fined, are they not going to be fined?
Yeah, so they, the, the way the law reads is that if the, the summonses can be applied